Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order. Hon, please call the board.
Mr. Ratt.
Here.
Mr. Riletta.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
And Mr. Marmee.
Present.
We have all here present this evening. You please rise for the invocation by Mrs. Floyd. William, if you'll help me with the pledge of allegiance.
We're ready. Would you bow your heads, please? Almighty God, we live in a dangerous world as seen by the events of the last couple of days. We ask that you be with us and with our safety forces, both locally and with our military, both home and abroad. Please help us to continue to live our daily lives without fear, but certainly with vigilance. In this community, we have lots of things going on right now, and we ask that you be with us, people who are involved in construction and with all the planning and everything, and keep them safe. And be with us tonight as we make the decisions that affect the city. Help guide us so that we make decisions that work for our citizens. We ask this in your name, amen.
William, do you want to start us out?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything that may be subject tonight to legislation. Do we have anything? I do believe we have a rule 11. Mr. Marmee.
Do we do the actual rule now?
I think, why don't we just do it in miscellaneous? Is it okay for you two, if we do rule 11 on this?
I just want to bring up in caucus that we are going to vote rule 11 on ordinance 16 dash 40. As long as the Mrs. Floyd also agrees with it, we provide.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Rule 11 means that it didn't make committee, the legislation wasn't ready, but if the majority and minority leader decide they want to do that, then we can go ahead and talk about some item on the agenda, and we'll do that in the miscellaneous. Next, we have the minutes of our September 6, 2016 meeting, as a motion to approve of. Motion by Mr. Ratt, second by Mr. Frazier. All of them favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. That passes. Thank you. We have four reports this evening from standing committees, one from finance, one from service, one from street, and one from safety. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Next on the agenda, we have reports from city officials. We have two this evening, one from our auditor, Stephen Johnson, our operating report for the period ending August 31, 2016, and one from Barb Jokes, our city income tax administrator, the income tax revenues for the period ending August 31, 2016. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Next on the agenda this evening, we have communications. We have Mayor Hall for proclamation, and I believe Mr. Canadis is here today.
Bob, do you want to join me up front, please? Thank you. Good. Go ahead, come on around here.
Now, this is Hunger Action Month, and as a result, I'm going to do a proclamation. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the United States and, of course, the state of Ohio, Newark is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our state and provide additional resources that the citizens of Newark need. Newark is committed to working with the Mid-Ohio Food Bank and partner agencies in educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. More than 524,000 individuals in Ohio rely on food provided by the Mid-Ohio Food Bank annually. The Mid-Ohio Food Bank distributed more than 59 million pounds of food and groceries in 2015 through its network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations. Food banks and partner agencies across the state, including the Mid-Ohio Food Bank, will promote numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvement in the efforts to end hunger in their local community. Now, therefore, I, Jeff Hall, Mayor of the great city of Newark, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2016 as Hunger Action Month in Newark, Ohio. And Bob is with our local food pantry, and he's willing to accept this. Thank you very much, Bob, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Do you have anything you'd like to say? You're welcome to.
On behalf of the Food Pantry Network of Licking County, we want to thank the community for what the community does for hunger in this community, all over Licking County. Our Food Pantry Network is really a model network for the state. We have food pantries from all over the state come to visit us. The Mid-Ohio Food Bank uses us as an example, and when they want to do some studies and what have you for that, they come to us and look to us to do their studies and things. So, we're real proud of the Food Pantry Network, and we're proud of what everybody in the community does.
You've got a great board. Of course, Chuck Moore is executive director, could not join us this evening. I believe you have 38 distribution points, something similar to that in Licking County. I know Chuck's told me before, they turn pennies into dollars, if you want to say that.
That's correct.
So, he'll log in on at 7:00 a.m., and can buy cereal for $0.05 a box, but it's sold out by 7:02. So, you know, those two minutes are really critical, and I know they do a great job of doing that and spending those donations wisely, so that's why you're so effective. So, Bob, thanks again for coming tonight.
Thanks for coming, I appreciate it.
And good luck. Yeah, very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Bob and Claudia. One of the communications this evening from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, an application for change of corporate stock ownership for Walgreens at 1425 North 21st Street. Again, without objection, that will be received and filed. Next on the agenda tonight, we have a public hearing. In this public hearing, there are basically two properties we're going to be talking about. One is a property at 21st and Myrtle with two different ordinances, and the other's a property at 21st and Mau with four different ordinances. What I guess I'd like to do during this public hearing is we're going to read the first two ordinances, which will concern Myrtle and 21st, then we'll open it up for comments. After we talk about that, then we'll talk about the one on 21st and Mau, and then we're going to close the public hearing, and then we're going to vote. So, if you want to speak, when we open the public hearing, now's your time to speak, because we won't be able to speak before we vote, so now will be the time. So, Hon, would you please read 16 dash 19?
Ordinance 16 dash 19 by Mr. Ratt and Mr. Marmee, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 1621 North 21st Street, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of G.O., General Office, Zoning District to G.C., General Commercial Zoning District.
And read 1622, if you will, please.
Ordinance 16 dash 20 by Mr. Ratt and Mr. Marmee, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 158 Myrtle Avenue, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of R.M., Single Family Residence, Medium Density Zoning District to G.C., General Commercial Zoning District.
Okay, we go with this public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this? Just raise your hand, and we'll have you pick up one at a time.
Yes, sir.
My name is David Lehman. I live at 326 Myrtle Avenue, which you people realize that's Newark township, so you don't have to pay a darn bit of attention to what I say tonight, because I don't vote for you and I don't vote against you.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
If I owned the property south of the Chicken Place down to the rear of the daycare center, I would certainly want that rezoned commercial too, if I owned that, because that's a hot piece. Now, we come down to what the houses we're talking about, and at one time, there was a house on the corner of Myrtle, east of this daycare center. So, actually, we're talking about the second house on Myrtle Avenue. And how in the world you ever got the address of 1621 North 21st Street is a miracle? And I do magic, and I don't understand that. It's on Myrtle Avenue, it was two lots down, but it's got a 21st Street address. Now, I'm assuming when you people listen to this, you're thinking, oh, that's a 21st address. That should be commercial. Well, that's the second house. Or, I call it the second house, you're calling it the first house. Now, if you go one more house, you call that the second one, I call it the third one. Now, you're down three houses. That house, since it's been purchased or in the last few years, has certainly not been kept up. It's very deplorable. I feel like the owner thinks, oh, if I let this thing get pretty trashy, they'll want it taken down. By the way, I hope the trash man comes tomorrow, because that metal glider and that trash you have in the middle of the driveway doesn't look too good. It doesn't look like you have too much respect for our neighborhood. Now, why am I against the rezoning? Several years ago, I asked a council member, he's not here tonight, I said, can we get a traffic light at 21st Street and Myrtle? He said, there's no way. No way you're going to get that. A few weeks ago, I interrupted Mr. Hall when he was trying to have an evening out with his wife. I said, how do I get a traffic light on Myrtle Avenue and 21st Street? He said, well, first you got to go to the engineering department. He said, then they do a study. And I don't think I'm going to quote you quite right, but he said, I don't think it's going to happen. So, we want to bring more congestion to that section, and we don't even have a traffic light. Now, we have more traffic there. You remember we closed Goose Pond on the 21st Street, right? Did we do that? Now, so we've got more traffic on 21st Street. Also, I believe that there is, on that 21st Street address, by the way, the church across the road is only a half a lot from 21st Street, and their address is Myrtle Avenue. So, I can't figure that one out yet. I don't know how we did that. But when you close Goose Pond, you know, we have a school up north, we have OSU, we have State Farm, these people come down, where they can shoot right down Myrtle Avenue. So, our traffic has increased tremendously. Now, this next thing, I don't know if you've ever noticed this, well, you haven't noticed it, because you're not on Myrtle Avenue. But when we have a rain, we have a pond there by the church. Now, I checked it out today, and I think the church has fixed that. They put in asphalt, which they have done in years past, and so that water runs out or stands on Myrtle Avenue. So, what do you get? You get cracked asphalt, and it's going to deteriorate. And by the way, there's a water puddle today at 2:30 at this so-called 21st Street address. So, I think there's a drainage problem there, myself. I think there's a drainage problem. Now, I'm going to couple things, and then I'll sit down. We have a problem with speeding on North 21st Street. Do you folks know that? Do you know that? Has anybody said anything to you about it? We have a speeding problem on 21st Street, and you want to put another commercial thing in there without a traffic light? Now, let me tell you something. My wife and I and a grandchild have been rear-ended on 21st Street. Lady back here was clipped at the Myrtle and 21st Street. Another friend of mine, who recently passed away, was turning onto Myrtle, and he got knocked her into that church. He's spent a lot of time in the hospital. If you live on Myrtle Avenue and you want to go out to 21st Street, that is like a gun that is loaded. And my family have talked, we feel it's just a matter of time before we're going to get it, the law of averages. So, we have had a lot of, we all know that's a street that has the most accidents, correct? So, we're going to put more business there, but we're not going to put up a traffic light. We're not going to do anything about it. Now, a cut-in, if you put a cut-in on Myrtle Avenue to this property, you've got two exits coming out of that church. And believe me, some of us older people, when we come out of there, we think the Lord's with us, and we really come out of there fast. So, I'm sure there's, so if you've got a business over here, people coming south, we're going north, it's going to be fun. Now, two other things, and then I will sit down. Who gets permission to put all these darn little signs up along 21st Street? Get your hair cut. Do this. Ollie's has got something going on. Connell's, 10, six, eight signs down the side. Don't we have a sign, ordinance? I understand we do, but we have to send them a letter, is that correct? Well, heaven's to Betsy, by the time you send them a letter, it's another, it's time that's gone by. That is called visual pollution, and I'm legally blind, but it bothers me. That is visual pollution. We're trying to clean up this town, and we let them put those signs up. Now, one more point, and then I will sit down. Not only do we have little signs up, but I understand a few years ago that someone tried to get billboards banned in Newark. I wish I'd have known that, I'd have put my two cents in. But I guess on the other side of the table, there was some big money involved. So, what do we do? We put up eight more billboards, or whatever it was. So, you're going to come down Route 13, you're going to turn on 21st Street, you're texting. First of all, you see four big billboards. Then you see all these little signs, you're going 55 miles an hour. Then you come to a billboard, it changes size like a television. Now, folks, if that's not distraction for a driver, I don't know what in the heck is. I'm from Perry County, might figure that out. So, that's my point. I'm really sad that the owner of this property is letting it deteriorate before something happens. That bothers me, because that shows me he has lack of respect for our neighborhood. And you all know how bad 21st Street is. We were coming out on 21st Street to make a right turn, and a lady pulled in left, and she said, can you help me? I'm having a baby. I said, lady, why in the world did you get on 21st Street in that condition? She said, I wasn't in that condition when I got on 21st Street.[947.23][947.23](Laughter).
You're going to follow that, Mr. Clark? You're not going to, you're not going to.
There's no way I can do anything. My name is Bob Clarkner. I live at 289 Myrtle Avenue. Now, I heard the words, well, let me say this. I'm not a politician, and I didn't get all my letters and words when I was in school, so please bear with me, if you would, please. I heard the words "family friendly" mentioned. Now, to me, "family friendly" means sell to a potential homeowner. Now, I'm talking about those two places on Myrtle Avenue. Second, sell to a, sell to people that can fix up places, and they can sell to potential homeowners. That's what I think "family friendly" means. The money that the gentleman makes from those things, or one or the other, use that money. He can build a business, he can start a business in a business zone, not in a residential area. There's definitely going to be more traffic, and it may very well be foot traffic. Now, foot traffic can be three different ways. It can be good, it can be bad, it can be very bad, and I've seen all of them. And there's no proof that there wouldn't be more of that traffic. And it'd be nice if it would be good traffic, but it could very well be bad and ugly foot As far as automobile traffic, you would come to this business off of 21st Street, yes. You would also come to this business from King Road, and there's only about, there's a lot of ways to get there probably through our neighborhood, our residential area, and tell me that's not going to be costly as far as danger. We have kids in that, in our residential area, we have people that walk, and I, it's bad enough now that I'm sure there are people that used to walk that don't do it anymore. But we would like to keep that area safe. Many people, including myself, and I have talked to quite a few, bought houses in that area because it's a residential area. And we would like to keep it that way, a residential area. You folks that are voting, that live in residential areas without businesses, would you want businesses coming in your residential area? We do not. So, they put a business in our area, six months later, they put another business, and then that keeps going. And you say, well, maybe it'd be a better business. Well, it could also be a worse business. I don't feel like throwing the dice myself. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Anyone else like to speak, either for or against? I may have forgot to say this earlier, but if you just give us your name and address for the reference.
John Parkinson. I live at 315 Myrtle Avenue. I kind of agree with Dave. A lot of you folks on here can't even remember when 21st Street stopped there, let alone went all the way through. But if you drive up 21st, you see a lot of small businesses planted in houses. I would think that Newark would sit down and look at traffic, would look at access, would look at the future a little bit farther than what they do. It's almost like all the reconstruction downtown, the expressway, one-way this way, two-way that way, jump lane this way, jump lane that way, bicycle path this way. It's like we're not thinking about it. To me, probably some of you haven't even looked at that property up there and wondered why there's a dirt pile about that much taller in the back of it, all the way up through there. And I'm not sure what kind of business you're going to put in there or not put in there, but I don't really want more business in my area. A little house changed, and it's almost bad enough that we got a daycare there in a sense. But there's, it just keeps migrating. You just look other places in town, including Heath. This corner is taken, it migrates right out the back door of that. Think about what you're doing. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else for or against? Wayman? Virginia Wayman?
Tom Wirtman, 279 West Myrtle Avenue. I agree with everything they said. I do want to say one thing. One of my jobs is up early and get my wife's coffee ready, but that's it, 6 o'clock. Now, the school bus comes, and there's three kids across the street waiting for the school bus. Now, between quarter after 6:00 and quarter or 7:00, when the school bus is there, there's these two cars. I think they've seen them, a red one and a black one. They'll go probably 60 miles an hour down through there, and there's a stop sign there. I've yet to see them stop. I can't get, I go out, and I still can't get the license number, because it's going by so fast. Last Wednesday, guess what? The school bus stopped. Guess what? There's two kids standing there, thank the Lord, they look down the street, because here come, never stopped, right past the school bus. And we're going to get more and more of that if we open businesses up down there below Myrtle Avenue. I just think it's the wrong thing to do. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Virginia Beach, and I live at 162 Myrtle Avenue, and I will be one house away from the area to be zoned. I spoke to you before about the traffic, which several people have referred to. Also, if you were up there, you will notice how narrow Myrtle Avenue is, it's a very narrow street, which means if you put curb cut-ins there, those curb cut-ins are going to be directly across from the north entrance to the church. Whatever business goes there will be directly across from the north entrance to the church. It doesn't seem appropriate for a neighborhood or for lots across from a church. Also, Mr. Lehman was talking about the traffic. If you're coming north on 21st Street and you turn into Myrtle Avenue, because of the traffic going south, people make a real quick turn, because they got to dart in between the cars coming south. Now, you've got cars that are turning into Myrtle Avenue, and here's a curb cut-in into a business. So, you've got these cars turning quickly into Myrtle Avenue, cars going into a business right off the corner. So, that certainly does not lead itself to a safe situation. I talked to you before about the kinds of business, even though the Planning Commission amended this to say, or changed the recommendation to say limited. Limited doesn't really include things that you think would be limited, because it does include a lot of undesirable things for residential neighborhood. They talk about a buffer. You can put a buffer there. A buffer will not protect us from noise, street traffic, people, lights, increased traffic. It just, a buffer, and it certainly can't protect the church from any of those things, because you can't put a buffer there. So, a buffer, to me, well, no, doesn't seem like it's going to buffer residential homes from those things. My neighbor, who couldn't be here tonight, just bought his house about a year and a half ago, maybe, and he's the one couldn't be here. But he just, he purchased his home, and I know the value of his home is going to decrease. He will not get that money back, because he's been there such a short time. We've been there a long time, you know, but we don't want to see that either. In last Friday's advocate, Mr. Rhodes was talking about the intersection of Sixth and Main Street, where that old Speedway station is, and he said, we need to encourage the Newark Development Partners to buy that, so that we don't put a used car lot there. But you're going to zone the corner where a residential street is, so they can put a used car lot there. That makes no sense to me at all. Not only used car lot, there's that whole entire list of things that shouldn't be there. You should have had in your packet a list of people who signed a petition, and I know it doesn't take long to sign a petition, but if you were the person passing it and you went to over 80-some homes, and you listened to what those people had to say, it wasn't just sign your name here. They had a lot, I had a lot of conversations with 122 people about that corner. I did not branch out into areas that would not be concerned about that. I stuck with the areas that have the people in it that probably go through that intersection every single day. You know, they're very, very concerned about it, and I hope that you will be too. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, did you want to speak?
Tom Myers, 148 Myrtle Avenue. And I might be repeating some of the stuff I've already heard, but the thing that I can see, the two things I can see that really aggravate me by putting a business in there of any kind is increased safety hazards and noise. We experienced some really bad noise from our favorite nightclub, The Grill, not too long ago, and it was like listening to a band in my backyard, and I'm on the opposite side of the street. But I'd just like to take all this into consideration, what everyone said here tonight, and we'd appreciate it. No vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for or against?
Steve Antritt, owner of 1621 North 21st Street and 158 Myrtle, was not going to speak tonight, but I will have to defend myself to Mr. Lehman. In 2007, I bought 1621 North 21st Street, so if there was a house to the east of it, I have no idea. It was 1621 North 21st Street. 2008, the couple next door, who I got to know, both of them had passed away, so I bought the property. I rented out. Started talking to some people over the years about, that'd be a good spot on 21st Street, possibly for small restaurant, you know, something like a Chick-fil-A or something. You have Lee's Chicken, Sofa Pia Express. You have Lee's Chicken, Sofa P Express, Old Bag of Nails. All those guys are right beside me. They all have general commercial. So when I heard the word tonight from Mr. Lehman about deteriorate the property, my kids go there, and everything I have is pretty nice, and I keep it nice and clean. I have a landscaping company. We mow there every week. I have a dumpster at the daycare to make sure whoever rents the house next door puts their trash in the dumpster. Today was a bad day because the renters are moving out yesterday, and they did fill up the dumpster and leave an old couch thing there one time. We keep care of the property. We make it look nice. Foot traffic, you know, I'm not sure about any of that stuff. I'm looking at it for economic growth. More taxes on 21st Street, I'm sure. Virginia Beach has done a good job to stir things up there. I've done work for her before. She called me a good neighbor in here, you know, a month ago. She said something about an adult bookstore could go in there, or a tattoo parlor. No way. If there's concerns about that, I'd put a deed restriction out there. I don't want that. You know, I'd want something good for the, you know, the community. Like I said, all three lots, you know, to the north of me are commercial. And I don't know who said something about the value of homes going down on Myrtle Avenue. I would think it would go up. I'm just running a small, little daycare in a rental property. I think something nice could go in there, you know, on the corner. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for or against on this one?
My name is Dave Morris. I live at 363 Queens Drive North, and I'm in Newark Township. These folks are in Newark Township. I'm on the zoning commission and have been for Newark Township for probably 25 years, maybe more. We moved in, we built our house in Newark Township 30 years ago. We moved in 30 years ago last March. So I'm interested in zoning and how it affects people around them. And Steve, honestly, I didn't know this was going on, and I blame myself. I didn't know this was going on until after church yesterday, which was about noon. So I've been involved in this for about 30 hours, give or take. But I've talked to several people, several neighbors of that neighborhood, and I found out that, at least I haven't run into anybody who dislikes your childcare center. I've not run into anybody that doesn't think that you're doing a good job there. It's apparent. You've got a thriving business, and we'd like to keep you there. So I guess in Virginia, like you said, Virginia's done a lot of footwork, and I haven't, so I give her the credit. But brokers, dealers, securities, financial planning, insurance agents and brokers, real estate sales and associated services, attorneys and other kinds of law practices, accounting, daycare center, dentist, and other medically related offices, like doctors' offices. That's how you're zoned right now. Those are good businesses. In my opinion, those are family-friendly businesses. Those are businesses that should be there with the neighborhood that's already established there. But then we take, and Virginia mentioned that Service Director Rhodes kind of made an offhand comment, at least in the Newark advocate, that Newark doesn't need another car lot. And I agree with that. Not that we have anything against car lots, we've just, we've got enough car lots. We don't need anymore. And quite honestly, that particular area would suit pretty well with a car lot because just down the street's Coggin and that whole area is just full of cars for sale. So that, when you're thinking you're going north, I guess, on 21st Street, that would be the first car lot you'd see, but you know there are others along the way. So I think your Public Service Director, Mr. Rhodes, is exactly right. Beer, wine, food carryout, beverage, and other retail drive-through, like a beer dock, a bingo hall, pawn shop, restaurant, drinking establishment, maybe I could start a bar there, guys, convenience store, grocery store, gas station, laundromat, automobile sales, and not only automobile sales, but repair. And it's not, you could build a full engine there and be okay zoning-wise, even under the limited one that the Planning Commission's recommending to you tonight, and bodywork. Don't you want to live next to an auto body shop? Wouldn't that be fun? Steve, you're doing a good job. You really are. You, sir, you mentioned the businesses on down the street, and they are general businesses, no question. You know what you serve as? You serve as a good neighbor because you're the buffer between these good folks and the general business district that creates all of the traffic. Bobby, Bob Klockner back there is, they had a block watch. I had a talk with him this morning. He's very concerned that additional traffic means additional crime, and he's dealt with crime in the neighborhood right now without any additional traffic on that street. He's got a committee. They're volunteers. They don't get paid. I salute them for that. Every neighborhood in Newark and surrounding areas ought to have a block watch, and it's unfortunate, but we're in that position. So anyway, Steve, you indicate that you want to make sure that it's family-friendly on that corner, and that's great intentions. But let me tell you, if I'm an investor, if you have this change to limited or general or whatever you might have it, and the zoning expands to the point where autos can be sold, beer docks can be there, if I'm an investor and I buy that lot from you, you have no control at that point, your name is off the deed and mine's on, so I'm in 100% control of it. Now, you can put some deed restrictions on, but you're going to have a list of deed restrictions that much. And if you've got deed restrictions that much, it's not worth it. So I guess my point to you is, I was on the original council, I hope I'm not taking too much time, but I was on the original council that rezoned 21st. I sat where Councilman Costa's sitting right now in the early '70s, and believe me, that was a ton of work. And everybody, everybody, from Dick Baker, the mayor at the time, everybody reached across the aisle, guys. There was no D, there was no R. We weren't anti-business, and these folks aren't anti-business. They're just not. It depends on what kind of business they want in their neighborhood. That's what they're concerned about, I guess. We did a job of rezoning 21st Street about from where Mau Street is to about where Goose Pond hits 21st. We made several mistakes. I was talking to Donna a little bit. I think the biggest mistake that we made at that point in time is we didn't have a service road, and we should have. There should be a service road all the way on the north side of North 21st from Mau Street to Goose Pond. We just didn't think about those things back then. And I kick myself every once in a while when I drive down 21st Street because that could take additional traffic off of 21st. But there was no D's and no Rs. There really wasn't. Most of the votes went seven to three, eight to two, things like that. Johnny Johns came to us with the first rezoning request. He represented the Borden Company in downtown Columbus. They had a thing that they wanted to compete against McDonald's called the Borden Burger. And he came with the request to rezone a little section of 21st Street. We looked it over. We knew exactly what was going in there. He told us, the Borden people came to our meetings, told us, yes, they showed us schematics of the building, which, by the way, now is Park National Bank. They've done some changes to that whole area, but that's where the Borden Burger was located, and it grew from there. And never once, never once was this a Democrat or a Republican issue. It just went, Newark needed a place to shop, Newark needed jobs. Simple as that. The road got, went from two-lane to four-lane, and people started hiring people. Those people paid tax money to the city, and it just kind of exploded. It was a good experience. I'm very proud that I was on that original council, but we put certain businesses in certain places. I encourage you to leave Steve Antritt's daycare center, which is a nice little business for the neighborhood, as a buffer between these folks and the general business area on 21st Street. Thank you.
Anyone else for or against? Last chance. Anyone else for or against? Autumn, would you like to read the next four, and then we'll, we'll have a public hearing on those, and then we'll close the public hearing vote.
Ordinance 16-21 by Mr. Rath, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmy, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 807 North 21st Street, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of RM, Single Family Residence, Medium Intensity Zoning District to GO, General Office Zoning District. Ordinance 16-22 by Mr. Rath, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmy, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 813 North 21st Street of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of RM, Single Family Residence, Medium Intensity Zoning District to GO, General Office Zoning District. Ordinance 16-23 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmy, and Mrs. Floyd, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 819 North 21st Street, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of RM, Single Family Residence, Medium Intensity Zoning District to GO, General Office Zoning District. And ordinance 16-24 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmy, and Mrs. Floyd, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 825 North 21st Street, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of LO, Limited Office Zoning District to GO, General Office Zoning District.
Now, we'll continue with a public hearing on these four. Is there anyone here to speak for or against these? Once again, anyone here to speak for or against properties corner Mau 21st during this public hearing? Anyone for or against? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Now, just to let you know what's going on here, what Autumn's going to do is read 16-19 for the second time, then there'll be a motion, and then there'll be some discussion up here, then there'll be a vote. So here we go.
Ordinance 16-19 by Mr. Rath and Mr. Marmy, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 1621 North 21st Street, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of GO, General Office Zoning District to GC, General Commercial Zoning District.
Prefer the second reading of 16-19. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath?
I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Motion to adopt first?
Motion to adopt 16-19.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buck. Mr. Rath?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend 16-19 from GC, General Commercial Zoning, to LC, Limited Commercial Zoning.
Second.
Mr. Rath, motions to amend 16-19 from GC to LC. That is also what the Planning Commission has recommended. Is that correct, Mr. Rath?
That is correct.
Okay, so a discussion on the amendment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Frasier. So I spent a lot of the last month, I guess, looking at the zoning code and trying to determine the best place where we find ourselves. And looking at the zoning code, looking at how the rest of 21st Street is zoned, and looking at what's currently zoned, there's no end to the zoning code, definitions of general business, medium intensity business, and general office. And the purpose of that is to ensure that there is a buffer when it bumps up to residential neighborhoods. And so when it comes to limited commercial being brought to the table to butt up against a residential neighborhood, this is where we get a lot of these issues. And I understand the goal is to increase business and improve the opportunity for business, but when it comes to limited commercial, it just opens up a little quagmire of what can go there. With no plan in place, there's the opportunity for impact on that residential neighborhood. And with the traffic patterns as they are, and the business already being in place in the general office district, I just don't feel like it's in our best interest to go into a spot zoning for limited commercial in this property, and then also to open up the opportunity for limited commercial throughout the city. And so with that, I will be closing.
Mr. Frasier, any other discussion on this amendment? Mr. Marmy?
Yes, Mr. Frasier kind of opened it up for discussion for the entire thing. The Ohio Revised Code is specific on the fact that councils and cities and municipalities must always recognize property owner rights. Destiny 2020 indicated that 21st Street is a business corridor. The folks on Pearson Avenue years ago, we fought the battle. I was their voice. I was the lone voice. Everybody on council was unanimous that those businesses, which are commercial, could be there right next to a residential. There were no issues other than mine, my voice for the residents of that area, for my constituents. In this situation, it is a business corridor. Mr. Morris, now I know who took the farmland next to my home and turned it into a business corridor.
Gotcha.
Yes, it happened to me when I lived in Sherwood Downs, and I do remember. And I remember that 21st Street was deemed to be a commercial zone, and that is what's going to happen. It is going to be all the way up and down 21st Street. We're already seeing the houses being transformed. There will not, in the future, be any property on 21st Street. It'll be rare that there be a residential property on 21st Street. The buffer zone, we have numerous properties within the city that have different establishments right across the street or in residential areas, including up and down 21st Street. We cannot say by law that only a specific use is authorized as far as zoning. It's against the law. We cannot say only a restaurant of a certain caliber is allowed on the corner of that property. That is illegal. We cannot say that, "Mr. Antritt, we only want your daycare business there. We don't want any other business but your daycare." He has rights as a property owner. He probably has rights to do a lot of different things within that area, even with currently where it stands, that probably people wouldn't like. This is about property owner rights. Virginia Beach has property owner rights being about a right next to it. She does have property owner rights. 21st Street has been deemed a business corridor for years. It is not something new. All the properties that are being changed to commercial or business properties on 21st Street, we fought this battle for years and years and years. If we vote against this, we stand the possibility of a lawsuit against us because we're not doing what's in the best interest of the property owner rights in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code. There is a property right next door that is actually zoned larger than what is currently being asked of. Anytime there's a contiguous property, if he goes down the zoning code, then that is another buffer. He is not even going the same. He is willing to go down a zoning code. The situations as far as traffic that are being addressed, we put a traffic light on that corner, on that property or in that intersection, you will not even, you would love the traffic patterns that you have right now. You put a traffic light there, there would be so much traffic cutting back behind your property because they want to get on 21st Street where there's a traffic light where it's not difficult to go out. A traffic light is not going to actually deter traffic patterns from that residential area. It would probably increase it. We took the traffic, or we took the cut out of Goose Pond in order to make it go to a traffic light, so then there was less traffic in that residential area. There are some other issues that I'll address during miscellaneous that have been brought up about some other things. I wish that we could keep different areas of the city the same as what they are today. Nothing stays the same. We are changing the face, we're making a facelift of the entire downtown. We're changing Mount Vernon Road as far as what it's going to look like in the future. There might be businesses popping up there. We are encouraging a business that, and praising it for going into a residential area on Mount Vernon Road because he's made upgrades and everything, and it's right in a residential area. We want to welcome businesses, and, you know, I wish Mr. Antritt could actually say that he'd like to put a deed restriction, but you can't do that. he'd like to put a deed restriction, but you can't do that. It's really not legal. We do make decisions based on what the future lies. That area is going to be business in the future. We cannot stop it. Because 21st Street has been deemed a business corridor, and according to the Ohio Revised Code, we can't deny property owner rights if there is a contiguous flow of businesses. I hope that we don't make the mistake of just looking at the negativity, like the rest of society is doing right now, and focusing on the negative, instead of looking for the positive in what this property owner is trying to do for the city of Newark. It reminds me of the Property Maintenance Code when we first drafted it. Citizens took just one little piece about rodents and that people could be written up if they stacked their wood next to their home, and they threw away the entire ordinance because of it. Can we not look for the positive of what a property owner is trying to do, make a business area in a business corridor, making it contiguous with what is already there? I do feel for people who live in an area and they have something move in that they really didn't want. I had that in my residential area. In my residential area, now there are homes with, that is an actual business where special needs folks live and reside, and because of our laws, they can have it like a boarding house, rooming house, and it's in my neighborhood. It is that property owner's right to do that. And we all said, yes, it's their right because it is within the scope of what is in our laws. And our laws are not just in the city of Newark, but it's also in the Ohio Revised Code. And those property owner rights are specific and clear that we have to support property Don't appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there any other discussion about this amendment? We can discuss the main issue. Mrs. Floyd.
I just want to say, I will vote in favor of the amendment because I will then vote against it, okay? But we need to amend it so it doesn't go through as general commercial. So I just want to make that clear. I will be voting for it so it goes to limited commercial, but when we come to the vote on it, I will be voting against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. This amendment changes it from G C, which it was originally talked about, to L C, which is what the Planning Commission suggested. And I didn't, I didn't hear that, Mr. Marmee. I just somewhat, we'll have no discussion of that out in the audience. You guys had your chance to talk, and everybody was very polite. I expect the same out of you guys when people are talking up here. So, I didn't hear that, so no more of that, whatever that was. Anyone else on the amendment?
We open the discussion after the amendment again.
Oh, yes. After we vote on the amendment, then we can talk about, we can talk about the main issue. Are we ready to vote on the amendment? Hon, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Buck.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
No.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
So 16-19 has been amended to say L C, Limited Commercial. So any discussion on this, on 16-19 as amendment? Mr. Cost.
I, I, I'm a big believer in property rights also. I think Mr. Antrick has the property rights, but I also feel this is how a neighborhood of people have property rights as well. I also will agree that 21st Street is and will always be a business corridor. However, Myrtle Avenue is not a business corridor. Myrtle Avenue is a residential neighborhood. I think there's a big distinction. I also have an appreciation for the buffer zone that's been discussed that the daycare center provides. And I think from what I can see, that is a good neighborhood, and I think that is a distinction of you being, no matter what your address is, you're on Myrtle Avenue. Your address is 21st Street, who knows? But that is a Myrtle Avenue address, and it looks as if it's a good situation. I don't think anybody would object to General Office for any, for any of the other, but I think there's a real concern about limited commercial as to what all can come along and be part of the residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. Anyone else?
Mrs. Floyd.
Mr. President, I just want to say, I too have been looking at the zoning code and looking at all the list of businesses that could conceivably go there. There are ones that would create traffic, would create lots of lights. I think the curb cut on, on Myrtle would be, would be an issue, especially, you know, with the church right there and with everything, so I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Anyone else? Mr. Buck.
Yes, this, you know, real quickly, it's, it's going to be a tough vote for everyone tonight. You know, I think most people up here know many of the parties involved this evening, but, you know, I know there's going to be a lot of township residents that are, you know, upset with my vote, but I am in support of this. I think we have to look at Newark as a whole. Mr. Marmee stated it well. I mean, this is what Destiny 2020 had said about, you know, this is a corridor on 21st Street for commercial development. And, I mean, Mr. Antrick's asking for less than what his neighbors have, and I, I think it's, it's a pretty fair proposal, and I will agree with what the Planning Commission stated, and I will be in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buck. Anyone else? Mr. Marmee.
Yes, I, I too am in full support of the Planning Commission. They've researched this. The administration is on board with what is being proposed. The preliminary is that the curb cut is what it currently is, which is on Myrtle Avenue. However, if site plans are presented where it's going to be a curb cut on 21st Street, I know that that will be considered also. It's not something that is set in stone right now. There's no curb cut there currently, so they're not going to just arbitrarily add it. But if a site plan presents itself to where it would be favorable, the curb cut issue onto Myrtle may not even be an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Anyone else? Mr. Roletta.
Thank you. I'd just like to say I agree with Mr. Cost. I think he stated it well. And also, I'd like to ask a question of Law Director, if that's possible.
Which question, Mr. Roletta?
Mr. Marmee mentioned a lawsuit, possibly, and I just wanted to learn a little more about that, the details on that. I really wasn't sure.
Mr. Sasson, would you like to comment?
In today's day and age, everything we do subjects to potential.
Thank you. You done, Mr. Buck? Yep. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Frazier.
Just to reiterate, we absolutely want to see businesses on 21st Street. We want to see growth. We want to see you invest in your property. The issue is the limited commercial. I voted no on the amendment because I did not feel limited commercial was right. I think it's either general business, medium intensity business, or general office I can get behind. But limited commercial, I just feel like it goes too far, and I would love to see you reply, and hopefully the Planning Commission can look at those three options, and we can come up with a better solution as soon as it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Anyone else like to speak before we vote? It takes six votes to agree with the Planning Commission, so we need six votes to pass this. Hon, please call the roll.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
No.
Mr. Blake.
No.
Mr. Buck.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
No.
Mrs. Floyd.
No.
Mr. Frazier.
No.
Ms. Hall.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
My vote is four yes and six no, is that correct?
Correct.
So, Mr. Sasson, this does not pass, correct?
Six four.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay.
I know there's a little discussion about the Planning Commission, and if they do recommend something, it takes seven votes to say no, but only six to do yes, so, okay.
I just want to make sure. So 16-19 fails. Now let's read 16-20.
Ordinance 16-20.
You might want to wait till this one's done.
Ordinance 16-20 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, and Mr. Marmee. An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 158 Myrtle Avenue, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of RM, Single Family Residence, Medium Density Zoning District to G C, General Commercial Zoning District.
You've heard your second reading of 16-20. What is your wish?
Mr. Buck, President.
Mr. Raff.
Make. Make a motion to adopt 16-20.
Motion by Mr. Raff.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Buck. Is there any discussion on 16-20?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff.
I'd like to make a motion to amend 16-20 from G C, General Commercial Zoning District to Limited Commercial Zoning District, L C.
Mr. Raff is amending, like I said, G C to L C on property 158 Myrtle Avenue. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Buck. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, Hon, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Buck.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
No.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
16-20 is amended to L C. Is there any discussion on the motion now as amended? Seeing none, Hon, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
No.
Mr. Blake.
No.
Mr. Buck.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
No.
Mrs. Floyd.
No.
Mr. Frazier.
No.
Ms. Hall.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
No.
And Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
16-20 fails seven to three. Now we go. We'll give you a minute to clear out, if you'd like. Okay, Hon, please read 16-21.
Ordinance 16-21 by Mr. Raff, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee. An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 807 North 21st Street, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of RM, Single Family Residence, Medium Density Zoning District to G O, General Office Zoning District.
Heard your second reading of 16-21. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff.
Make a motion to adopt 16-21.
Motion by Mr. Raff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Buck. Is there any discussion on 16-21? Got awfully quiet here, didn't it? Hon, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Buck.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
16-21 passes 10-0. Next we have 16-22.
Ordinance 16-22 by Mr. Raff, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee. An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 813 North 21st Street, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of RM, Single Family Residence, Medium Density Zoning District to G O, General Office Zoning District.
Heard your second reading of 16-22. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff.
Make a motion to adopt 16-22.
Motion by Mr. Raff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 16-22? Mr. Cost.
I was wanting to get my discussion in before we went through 16-21. If I could ask Mr. Rhodes, if I could get him to address a point, I would appreciate it very much. One point of discussion we had about these four properties is that there is a feeling that there needs to be a buffer zone with people that live on Crawford Drive. And what I would hope that in these four, that that is part of the agreement, so that those folks aren't made part of the development.
Yes, yes, it is. It is. They'll have, they'll have a substantial buffer zone, and Crawford can never be opened up to Mao. And we're going to limit a couple of the curb cuts that are on 21st Street to the furthest south property to one curb cut in that one too. So there's going to be a couple less curb cuts on 21st Street. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Cost. Anyone else? Hon, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Buck.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
16-22 passes 10-0. Next we have 16-23.
Ordinance 16-23 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd. An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 819 North 21st Street, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of RM, Single Family Residence, Medium Density Zoning District to G O, General Office Zoning District.
Heard your second reading of 16-23. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Raff.
Make a motion to adopt 16-23.
Motion by Mr. Raff. Second by Mr. Buck. Is there any discussion on 16-23? Seeing none, Hon, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Buck.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
16-23 passes 10-0. Next we have 16-24.
Ordinance 16-24 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd. An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 825 North 21st Street, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of LO, Limited Office Zoning District to G O, General Office Zoning District.
Heard your second reading of 16-24. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff.
Make a motion to adopt 16-24.
Motion by Mr. Raff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Any discussion on 16-24? Seeing none, Hon, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Buck.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson. that of R M, Single Family Residence, Medium Density Zoning District, to G O, General Office Zoning District.
Heard your second reading of sixteen dash twenty-two, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt sixteen dash twenty-two.
Motion by Mr. Raff?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on sixteen dash twenty-two? Mr. Cost?
I was wanting to get my discussion in before we went through sixteen twenty-one. If I could ask Mr. Rose, if I could get him to address a point, I would appreciate it very much. One point of discussion we had about these four properties is that there is a feeling that there needs to be a buffer zone with people that live on Crawford Drive. And what I would hope that in these four, that that is part of the agreement so that those folks aren't made part of this development.
Yes, yes, it is. It is, they'll have a substantial buffer zone. And Crawford can never be opened up to Mao. And we're going to limit a couple of the curb cuts that are on Twenty-first Street to the furthest south property to one curb cut-in that way too. So there's going to be a couple less curb cuts on Twenty-first Street.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cost, anyone else? Please call the whole vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Rileta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Sixteen dash twenty-three passes ten zero, next we have sixteen dash twenty-three.
Ordinance sixteen dash twenty-three by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as eight nineteen North Twenty-first Street, City of Newark, Lincoln County, Ohio, from that of R M, Single Family Residence, Medium Density Zoning District, to G O, General Office Zoning District.
Heard your second reading of sixteen dash twenty-three, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt sixteen dash twenty-three.
Motion by Mr. Raff?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buck. Is there any discussion on sixteen dash twenty-three? Seeing none, please call the whole vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Rileta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Sixteen dash twenty-three passes ten zero, next we have sixteen dash twenty-four.
Ordinance sixteen dash twenty-four by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as eight twenty-five North Twenty-first Street, City of Newark, Lincoln County, Ohio, from that of L O, Limited Office Zoning District, to G O, General Office Zoning District.
Heard your second reading of sixteen dash twenty-four, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt sixteen dash twenty-four.
Motion by Mr. Raff?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Any discussion on sixteen dash twenty-four? Seeing none, please call the whole vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Rileta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Sixteen dash twenty-three passes ten zero, next on the second reading we have sixteen dash seventy-five.
Resolution sixteen dash seventy-five by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service for the City of Newark, Ohio, to enter into a lease agreement with Park National Bank for the lease purchase of one medic unit for the Division of Fire.
Heard your second reading of sixteen dash seventy-five, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Johnson?
Make a motion to adopt resolution sixteen seventy-five.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on sixteen dash seventy-five? Seeing none, please call the whole vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Rileta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Sixteen dash seventy-five passes ten zero, next we have sixteen dash seventy-six on the second reading.
Resolution sixteen dash seventy-six by Mr. Raff, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Heard your second reading of sixteen dash seventy-three, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt resolution sixteen dash seventy-three.
Motion by Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on sixteen dash seventy-three? Seeing none, please call the whole vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Rileta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Sixteen dash seventy-five passes ten zero, next on the second reading we have sixteen dash seventy-five.
Resolution sixteen dash seventy-five by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, Mr. Johnson, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service for the City of Newark, Ohio, to enter into a lease agreement with Park National Bank for the lease purchase of one medic unit for the Division of Fire.
Heard your second reading of sixteen dash seventy-five, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Johnson?
Make a motion to pass resolution sixteen seventy-five.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on sixteen dash seventy-five? Seeing none, please call the whole vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Rileta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
No.
Sixteen dash seventy-five passes ten zero, next we have sixteen dash seventy-six on the second reading.
Resolution sixteen dash seventy-six by Mr. Raff, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Johnson, a resolution authorizing the conveyance of certain real property now owned by the City of Newark, Ohio, to Newark Development Partners as its agent for industrial, commercial, distribution, and research development.
Heard your second reading of sixteen dash seventy-six, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt sixteen dash seventy-six.
Motion by Mr. Raff?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buck. We have a discussion on sixteen dash seventy-six. Seeing none, please call the whole vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Rileta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Sixteen dash seventy-six passes ten zero, next on the second reading we have sixteen dash eighty-one.
Resolution sixteen dash eighty-one by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Raff, a resolution authorizing and directing the Mayor of the City of Newark to prepare and submit applications to the Ohio Department of Environmental Protection Agency for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen Diesel Emissions Reduction Grant Program for equipment replacement, repower, retrofit, and anti-idle.
Heard your second reading of sixteen dash eighty-one, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt resolution sixteen dash eighty-one.
Second.
Been listening to me, motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Johnson. We have a discussion on sixteen dash eighty-one. Seeing none, please call the whole vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Rileta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Sixteen dash eighty-one passes ten zero, will it bother you, Mr. Blake? During your texting, will it bother you having this meeting? Are you okay?
I'm multitasking.
Okay, just checking. Next we have resolutions on the first reading, sixteen dash eighty-three.
Resolution sixteen dash eighty-three by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Sixteen dash eighty-three.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution sixteen dash eighty-three.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule on sixteen dash eighty-three by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmy?
Yes, we need some things expedited. Anytime that we need payout or anything, we need to expedite those. And we have a couple of other things that the bills are due immediately that we need to get paid.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy, please call the whole vote. Waive the two-day reading rule on sixteen dash eighty-three.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Rileta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Sixteen dash eighty-three passes ten zero, next we have sixteen dash eighty-four.
Resolution sixteen dash eighty-four by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Sixteen dash eighty-four will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And finally this evening, we have sixteen dash eighty-five.
Resolution sixteen dash eighty-five by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Raff, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the County Auditor and declaring an emergency.
Sixteen dash eighty-five is on the first reading, but it is an emergency, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt resolution sixteen dash eighty-five.
Motion by Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on sixteen dash eighty-five? Seeing none, please call the whole vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Rileta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Sixteen dash twenty-one passes ten zero, next we have sixteen dash twenty-two.
Orderment sixteen dash twenty-two by Mr. Raff, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Sixteen dash twenty-two will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And finally this evening, we have sixteen dash eighty-five.
Resolution sixteen dash eighty-five by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Raff, a resolution authorizing and directing the Mayor of the City of Newark to prepare and submit applications to the Ohio Department of Environmental Protection Agency for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen Diesel Emissions Reduction Grant Program for equipment replacement, repower, retrofit, and anti-idle.
Heard your second reading of sixteen dash eighty-one, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt resolution sixteen dash eighty-one.
Been listening to me, motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Johnson. We have a discussion on sixteen dash eighty-one. Seeing none, please call the whole vote.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Rileta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Sixteen dash seventy-five passes ten zero, next we have sixteen dash seventy-five.
Resolution sixteen dash seventy-five by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Raff, Mr. Johnson, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service for the City of Newark, Ohio, to enter into a lease agreement with Park National Bank for the lease purchase of one medic unit for the Division of Fire.
Heard your second reading of sixteen dash seventy-five, what is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Johnson?
Make a motion to adopt resolution sixteen seventy-five.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule on sixteen dash seventy-three.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule on sixteen dash seventy-three.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes, I need to call a Finance Committee meeting. The reasoning why I did not support sixteen seventy-five is another kind of hit onto our capital improvements without seeing what our capital improvements are going to look like in two thousand and seventeen. I just, I mean, I support additional medics and things like that. I just wish that we could figure out a way to fund more of these items. And I just don't know if that's our best method, whether we need to come up with another method or not. I wish that some of those folks would have stuck around. Mr. Lehman indicated the drainage problem. I think that that should be addressed then with our, with the appropriate entity, which is our stormwater utility. The other thing, that has been a drainage problem, and some of it was created because the church was built prior to all of our ordinances and things that were in place where they would have had to have a spillway or else tie into the city. The other thing that's causing the problem is the next thing, property owner rights. I believe in property owner rights, I believe it is their right. The majority of residents that we're in here have the right to be in the township. They have the right, they have chosen, we do not force them to go into our city, move into our city. Even though it would be to their best interest, the city's best interest, for that to happen, we do not force that. It would be to the best interest of the church if they would move into the city, because then we would have sewage that we could put down through that area. And we would not have that problem with the drainage in that area. They are an island, they are surrounded by city. They have chosen as a property owner to maintain that right. And I believe still that we made the wrong decision this evening. Councils before us stepped out and made decisions to allow Big Bear and Hearts to commercial property right next to residential.
Ordinance 16-40 by Mrs. Floyd.
Mr. Marmee?
We need on the record that the majority and the minority both agree to bring this on the table.
Thought we already did that in the caucus, but we'll do it again.
I didn't know.
I thought we did, but.
Okay, I just mentioned it for me, I didn't know if Mrs. Floyd.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Mr. Marmee and Mrs. Floyd both have agreed to use roll up, correct?
Correct.
Yes. Thank you.
Ordinance 16-40 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Ratt, and Mr. Frazier. An ordinance amending Chapter 1860 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Newark, Ohio regarding commercial solid waste operations in the downtown district and declaring an emergency.
Further reading of 16-40, what does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Frazier?
I would like to make a motion to adopt.
Waive the two-day reading.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to waive the two-day reading.
Yes.
It has the emergency clause on it, does that mean we're waiting another two-day reading?
Uh, Mr. President, I would like to go back to my original statement, what I was trying to say, and I would like to make a motion to adopt 16-40.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier, our second, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 16-40?
No.
Seeing none, Hon, please call the roll vote. Second by...
Mrs. Floyd.